Mr. Chairman, staff is ready to begin.
Thank you, Teresa. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, meeting of the Hilton Head Island Planning Commission. And Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome, I know that Councilwoman Becker and Councilman Hawkins and Lennox are on the line. We'd like to welcome them to the meeting as well. And Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Present.
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Ms. McGowan?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Present.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Present.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
And Mr. Campbell is expected.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, I don't see you.
Yeah, I got a new computer and I just downloaded the BlueJeans, so I don't know if anyone can see me or not, but yeah, I'm here.
We don't see you yet, John, but as soon as you get your program downloaded, we will welcome you in the flesh, so to speak.
Yeah.
But we can hear you fine.
Yeah, and I could see you, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, hopefully we'll get that issue resolved. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, can I have a motion from the commissioners to approve the agenda? I've got Leslie and I've got Stephen. And we have a motion and a second. And Teresa, if you would call the roll, and if there are any adjustments to the agenda, when Teresa calls your name, please designate at that time. Teresa?
Mr. Perry?
You're muted, Alan.
Approved. Sorry about that.
Mr. Campbell?
Approved.
Mr. Stevens?
Approved.
Ms. McGowan?
Approved.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approved.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approved.
Mr. Alfred?
Approved.
Mr. Theodore?
Approved.
Mr. Christian?
Approved. And next up, we have the minutes of our February 3rd, 2021 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Alan, thank you. And Stephen, second. And if you have a cellphone, obviously, we'd like to mute those. We have a motion and a second to approve our minutes of February 3rd. Teresa, would you please call the roll? If you have any suggested changes, please pipe up at that time. Teresa?
Mr. Perry?
Approved.
Mr. Campbell?
Approved.
Mr. Stevens?
Approved.
Ms. McGowan?
Approved.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approved.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approved.
Mr. Alfred?
Approved.
Mr. Theodore?
Approved.
Mr. Christian?
Approved. And John, we can now see you. Good work.
Thank you.
And appearance by citizen. Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. There were no comments submitted on the portal. Citizens were provided the option to give public comment during the meeting by phone. There were no requests to give public comment by phone.
Thank you, Teresa. We have no unfinished business. We have an item of new business, a public hearing on LMO amendments. The town of Hilton Head Island is proposing to amend Chapters 5 and 10 of the Land Management Ordinance to revise the following sections. Section 16-5-112, modify the flood zone standards for consistency with the March 23rd, 2021 flood insurance rate maps. And Section 16-10-102(c dot 1), modify the rule of measurement for the calculation of building height from the base flood elevation to a static building height measured from the mean sea level. And Shari Mendrick, our floodplain administrator, is going to make a presentation. Shari, are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Give me just a moment to share my screen with you. Can everybody see this okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Shari Mendrick, and I'm the floodplain manager for the town of Hilton Head Island. I sincerely apologize. I'm a little bit under the weather, so please bear with me. And if you have trouble understanding me, please don't hesitate to interrupt. So I know you guys have heard for a long time that we have pending flood insurance rate maps for the town of Hilton Head Island. And there are some changes that come along with these flood insurance rate maps that do affect parts of the Land Management Ordinance. So as we get started today, I'm going to hit on some key points. I'm going to go over some background information, a lot of background information, and then make recommendations on changes to the building heights with the LMO. So the key point today is the deadline for the adoption of the March 23rd, 2021 flood insurance rate map, or the deadline is March 23rd of 2021. I apologize. FEMA requires that town council adopt these maps by that date. If we fail to adopt the maps by March 23rd of 2021, our community will be suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program. As a result of the changes to the maps, we do need to revise the Land Management Ordinance to attempt to keep our building heights the same. If we don't improve these LMO changes by March 23rd, the maximum building height will be reduced by several feet. So the first thing that I would like to go over with you is what are flood insurance rate maps and how they work. We'll talk about the maps themselves, base flood elevations, and the firm update, and how the maps will change. Then I'll go over municipal code changes that we need to make to make sure that the firm update does not negatively affect the town. So what are flood insurance rate maps? Or what are firms? Firms are flood insurance rate maps. They are used for flood insurance rating. That's a very key point. They are used for insurance rating. And they're also used as the minimum regulatory standard for building construction. Any changes that are presented here today do not dictate flood insurance rates for our community. FEMA publishes the flood insurance rate maps, and our current flood insurance rate maps are pretty outdated from 1986. So here is a snapshot of our current flood insurance rate map. The areas in blue and yellow are the designated high-risk zones. These are areas where flood insurance purchase is federally required. These are also the areas that are currently regulated by the municipal code with a minimum lowest floor requirement. The areas with no color on the map are the lower moderate risk zones, and these are the areas where the federal flood insurance purchase requirement does not apply. So what is a base flood elevation or BFE? Let's take a look at A 714 as an example of a base flood elevation. A 714 is all of the dark blue areas on the map. The important thing to note here is the 14. So we're going to start with sea level, which you may have referred to as mean sea level. And then there's the ground level, which is obviously above sea level. Then there is the base flood elevation, or BFE for short. Remember the 14 that I just talked about? Well, the 14 is the base flood elevation, which is a measurement above sea level. So the BFE means 14 feet above sea level. If we measure from the ground, a BFE of 14 is seven feet above the ground per this illustration. The base flood elevation is the expected height of floodwater during the 1% annual chance flood, or what is commonly known as the 100-year flood. This flood has a 1% annual chance occurring in any given year, and the areas that are within this 14-foot elevation are suspected to be inundated during the 100-year flood. It will be inundated to 14 foot above sea level, but seven feet above the ground level. So let's build a house in a 7 flood zone, A 714 today. Again, the base flood elevation is 14 feet above mean sea level, which is seven feet above the ground level. Currently, the lowest floor requirement for homes constructed in the floodplain is required to be the base flood elevation plus one foot. This changed in 2016. After 30 years of being at 14 feet, we went up to 15 feet in 2016 as a requirement of the International Building Code. That plus one is known as the freeboard, which is eight feet above the ground level. You can see that with the 1% annual chance flood, the top of the first floor would be one foot above the anticipated flood level. So we need to take action because the island's firm is being updated. FEMA is changing the firm for Hilton Head Island, and the town has to adopt this firm by March 23rd of 2021. I'm reiterating this point because it is very important that we take some action and get this adopted by March 23rd. So what's the problem? Well, the new flood insurance rate maps lower the base flood elevations in most areas. This is a snapshot of the updated flood insurance rate map. Pardon me. The areas in blue, yellow, and orange are still the high-risk zones, and those areas with no color are the low to moderate risk zones. If you think back, and I'll show you a comparison in just a minute, on the 1986 maps, we had 75% of our land area in the high-risk zone and 25% in the low-risk zone. So we have 75% that was regulated by a lowest floor requirement since, really, since 1977. But on the 21, 2021 maps, that statistic is swapped. There's only 25% of our land area in the high-risk zone and 75% of our land area in the low-risk zone. Also, please note to the, on my left-hand side, I apologize, left-hand side of this slide, that the base flood elevations are significantly lower. The common base flood elevations in the high-risk zone are seven and eight feet, which is significantly lower than the existing 14 feet. So wouldn't it be a reasonable assumption that that BFE should either stay the same or be higher and not be lowered from our historical lows? There are a couple of reasons why this can happen. The first is that the new flood insurance rate maps are based on better survey data from 2013. The survey is better technology than the 1986 maps, but these maps were drafted before Hurricanes Matthew and Irma impacted our island. As a result of these storms, we lost a large part of our dune system. The primary frontal dunes slowed the storm surge and reduced flooding. And without the dunes, storm surges could potentially be higher. So as we stand right now, our flood risk is higher than it was before Matthew and Irma. And there are future flood insurance rate maps in the works. They're not supposed to take 30 years, but the indication is that the BFEs will go back up with the new flood insurance rate maps once our more recent storms are modeled. Pardon me. So let's take a look at what a lower base flood elevation means. So we currently have a property that has a base flood elevation of 14 feet. The base flood elevation is going to be lowered by seven feet and be equivalent to the ground elevation. This means, instead of requiring a house to be built safely above floodwater of the 100-year flood, the top of the first floor would only need to be one foot above the ground. So what are we proposing to do about it? As a result of the firm update, staff is proposing changes to the municipal code. So instead of going from a regulated footprint of 75%, 25%, and this is a similar map, just without the coloring, just to get a better stamp of the area that is regulated. So the gray shaded area is the regulated area. The white area is currently the unregulated area. And this is what our new map looks like as far as regulated versus unregulated. So this is the 25-75%. So town staff has looked at a lot of options. We've talked to a lot of people. We've gotten ideas from other communities and local organizations. And staff is proposing to regulate nearly the same area from the 1986 forms, but based on ground elevation, regardless of flood zone, which this map shows ground elevations above 13 feet, which is nearly the same footprint as what is regulated by the 1986 maps. It's actually a little bit less, but it is nearly, it's about 2,000 acres less, but it is nearly the same footprint. So as a result, the changes will require the top of the first floor to be built at the same height prior to the addition of the one-foot freeboard added to the 2016 building code. And here's where it gets tricky. For residential development, the top of the first floor would either need to be 13 feet above sea level or the new base flood elevation plus three feet, whichever is higher. Please take note of the red asterisk next to the 13 feet. The complicated matters just a little bit more. FEMA is recalibrating the map's vertical reference from NGVD 29 to NAVD 88. The important thing to keep in mind here is that the new 13-foot elevation is exactly the same elevation as what we have historically known as 14 feet. Remember, the old 14 feet is the most common base flood elevation on the island. And requiring the top of the first floor to be at the new 13 feet above mean sea level keeps most residential structures out of floodwater from the 100-year flood. We are proposing a little bit of a change to commercial property or commercial development in requesting that the first floor either be 11 feet above mean sea level or the base flood elevation plus two. This is incredibly important because, as staff discussed this, we determined that it was our duty to get residents back in their home as quickly as possible, and then the commercial can rebuild. So staff also has to make changes to the Land Management Ordinance. So all of that being said, this is why I'm here today. So what does the LMO have to do with these flood insurance rate maps? Well, the new flood insurance rate maps will affect maximum building height because buildings are measured, or maximum building height is measured starting from the base flood elevation. For the Land Management Ordinance, building height, pardon me, for the LMO, building heights are measured starting at base flood elevation, not at ground level. Since the addition of the one-foot freeboard in 2016, there's been some confusion as to what needs to be used for the rule of measurement. For example, a property with a base flood elevation of 14 feet in a zoning district with a 35-foot maximum building height, the maximum building height is measured starting at 14 feet, which is seven feet above the ground. Here you can see that the house is 35 feet tall, measured from the base flood elevation. This house currently complies with the current LMO requirements for maximum building height. From the ground, the house is 42 feet tall. From the BFE, the house is 35 feet tall. Again, this house currently complies with the LMO's maximum building height. If the base flood elevations are lower, the maximum building heights will be lower unless you change the way you measure building heights or raise maximum building height. With the new firm, BFEs will be reduced in most areas. For example, on this property, the BFE will be reduced from 14 feet to seven feet. Now the building height measurement will start at a BFE of seven instead of 14. So the maximum building height will be reduced by seven feet. All existing structures that were previously conforming now become non-conforming because part of the roof above the 35 feet will be that non-conforming portion. Any new structure on this property would have to be built seven feet shorter than it is allowed today. So the owner will lose seven feet of building height. Staff is proposing to change how buildings are measured by using mean sea level instead of base flood elevation. The LMO would start to measure buildings at 13 feet, which is the new, is the new 14 feet above sea level for residential construction, and 11 feet above mean sea level for non-residential construction. This is the same height with a different name. This will maintain the maximum building heights as they are today. Base flood elevations may change in the future, but sea level won't change. Again, as a result of the proposed LMO amendments, the current maximum building heights will be the same after March 23rd as they are today. Again, I would like to present you with the key point that the deadline to adopt any changes and to officially adopt the flood insurance rate maps is March 23rd of 2021. And we need to look at a way to revise the LMO to keep maximum building heights the same. We do not approve the LMO changes by March 23rd. Maximum building heights will drop by several feet. At this time, I would be more than happy to take any questions, and I apologize for getting tripped up a little bit there. But I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Shari or comments?
I'm sorry, I did not hear any of that.
All right, Teresa, did you hear my request?
No, sir. If you could repeat yourself, please.
Okay. I've asked that you call on each of the commissioners in order to see if they have a comment or a question for Shari.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Shari, if you wouldn't mind unsharing your screen?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Give me just a second. I'm very sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Theodore?
Thank you, Shari, for the presentation. Hope you feel better. Why isn't the building height measured from the base flood elevation plus one?
The building height, the plus one, that freeboard was added to the International Building Code in 2016, effective July 1st of 2016, and it just never carried over into the LMO. At that point in time, the position I am as floodplain administrator was vacant, and it was just never carried over as a change to the Land Management Ordinance.
Because, and the reason why I ask that is because when that came about, I don't think, was there a modification for the height to be measured from the plus one, or is it still from the base flood elevation?
It is still from the base flood elevation.
So in general, it took a foot out of the height of the buildings from a few years ago? Would that be correct?
Yes, that is correct.
It seems like now would be the time to make that correction, potentially?
Yes, and that's why we're looking at having, or we're going to request the PPC next week, that it be forwarded to town council, that not only are the building heights measured from 13 feet, the new, the old 14, the new 13 feet, but also request that lowest floors be at a minimum of 13 feet for residential construction. And then the same idea followed into commercial construction. For commercial construction, we're requesting that building heights be measured from 11 feet, and also requesting the minimum lowest floor for commercial construction be 11 feet. So this is the attempt to mesh those two together.
The, what's the purpose of the elevation where it was either base flood, 13 or 11, plus one, or base flood elevation, plus three feet, I can't remember what it said, whichever is greater? What's the purpose for that second portion of the "or"?
So the "or" is, so we are required to adopt that freeboard language by FEMA to be in compliance with the minimum standards of the National Flood Insurance Program. So we have to relate the lowest floor, and that's not for building height, the plus one and the plus two, that's not for building height, that's only for lowest floor requirement. In most cases, the 13 feet or the 11 feet are going to be the higher of the two measurements. There's one small area in Palmetto Dunes, but it's mostly in an area that's already constructed where those two elevations will not match up. But the purpose of those two, pardon me, the purpose of those two elevations is that we, or the plus three and the plus two, is that we looked at everywhere the flood zones changed. We looked at the changes in the seven-foot elevation, the changes in the eight foot, and picking that static level was always the higher. So instead of just having a minimum standard of plus one that is required per code, we had discussed with staff some resiliency components that can be carried through the ordinance for potential future building if the maps were to change again. So that's why we picked that freeboard, but in most cases, those static elevations are going to be the higher of the two.
And you said that there's a case in Palmetto Dunes where it would apply?
It's an area that's already constructed. They're mayor, and I don't have an exact lot count, but for the most part, it's just a very small area. And I want to say it was on the order of 10 to 12 lots that it affected, not very much at all.
And can you give me an example of, like, the numbers of how that would apply for that special area, just out of curiosity?
So what would happen, and probably the easiest thing is that if it were in one of those areas that had a higher BFE. So let's say it had a base flood elevation of 11 feet, which would require them to go up to 14 feet, I'm sorry, which would require them to go up to 14 feet, they would just lose one foot of their building height unless they apply for a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is something that we've already discussed would meet most variance requirements. So, you know, one of those is that it meets the character or other consistencies in the neighborhood. I apologize, I don't remember the exact term. But we have already discussed with other people in the Development Review and Zoning Department that if it were to decrease that building height by just one foot for those few lots, that it would be something that we could put through VZA for a variance to give them that additional foot of building height.
And would the town, would the town request that variance, or would the property owner have to request that variance?
The property owner, if they're going to be in that foot, I mean, if they're going to exceed the building height by that one foot, the property owner would have to request the variance. the variance.
And then, we talked a while back, how were the stuff like gatehouses and restroom buildings that had that 300-foot allowance that went away with the hydrostatic vents, how was that going to be handled?
That's not handled as part of the LMO building height change, that's handled in the municipal code, and that presentation is going to PPC next week. But we have added an additional category in the municipal code for a non-residential auxiliary structure, and that requires those structures to be, if they're in the special flood hazard area, base flood plus 1, which is the minimum requirement, we have to do that if it's in the base, if it's in the special flood hazard area per FEMA, we cannot exempt anything. But then, there is another caveat in there for those structures that are not in the special flood hazard area, then those can be at or above the highest adjacent grade. So, that's something that's not in the land management ordinance because it's a building height, it's not related to building height. Typically, those auxiliary structures, we don't have to worry about height, but it is something that is addressed in the municipal code.
Okay. All right, that's it for my questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
Oh, yeah, hey, Sheri here, I hope you feel better soon. Can you first discuss, you know, communications that you've had between both the Home Builder Association and the Realtors Association, and their inputs on this?
Oh, gosh, Alan, we have talked to just about everybody, not specifically the Realtors Association, however, Gene Beck is on our program for public information. So, we have discussed this with the Home Builders Association, the local group of American Institute of Architects, we've discussed it with the local engineers, we've reached out to some of the commercial development, specifically the seapines area, we've reached out to some of the ARBs, we've reached out to NOAA about sea level rise data, Anne Siren is also part of a sea level rise task force. We have really tried to cover our bases and come up with a proposal that keeps resilient building in our area. We had gone to the Home Builders Association early, early on in this process, there were some other recommendations that were made, but we just couldn't try to get them to work. So, we presented this proposal to the Home Builders Association after we had some of the kinks ironed out, and from the previous presentation that went to the LMO committee, we were proposing, excuse me, a lowest floor requirement at the 14, which would be the current 15, so we were going to build that additional foot in. But the home builders had asked us to please reconsider that for residential construction because they wanted to look at, because we have a huge inventory of homes that were built before that 1-foot free board was instated, and they requested that we back down off of that residential elevation by a foot. And we looked at all the data, we looked at the area, I know Todd had requested at that meeting too, that he wanted to see the footprint of that area that is above that 13-foot contour, and we took all of that into account and got the request from the Home Builders Association, and then adjusted this proposal accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I'm listening, and I think a lot of the questions that I even thought I would have have been asked. But Sheri, I guess, excuse me for apologizing for my voice, I have some allergies. The flood, the maps that you showed earlier, there were some areas that were, as I think you said, were the 25% areas, there's things that have changed now. How many areas on the island do we have that are at risk at sea level or below sea level?
We don't have any specific pieces of property except for our beachfront that's at or below sea level. Our average ground elevation coming from the seapines area, working your way mid-island goes from about 6 feet, and then it elevates as you work your way back towards Hilton Head Plantation, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, with the highest elevation of 24 feet. So, it kind of gradually rises as you go from the seapines area through mid-island and then up towards Hilton Head Plantation. But we don't have anything that is right at sea level that is buildable property, other than our beaches.
And with the input that you said you've had from the various associations and organizations, are there some structures that are in jeopardy of being non-conforming with the new changes?
Yes, there are, but there already are non-conforming structures. So, the Beaufort County entered the National Flood Insurance Program in 1977. So, anything that was constructed prior to 1977 is likely non-conforming. I don't know when we started having building height for lowest floor requirements, I don't know when we started having, or when we instated the LMO requirement for that building height. So, anything that was, then, anything that was built from 1977 to 1986 was under a different flood insurance rate map that had a lower floor elevation. So, the average elevation on those maps was between 11 and 13 feet. So, that's one of the reasons why we took into consideration the commercial at 11 feet, we have a huge commercial inventory from that timeframe, and then in 1986 is when it went up to 14 feet. So, we do have an inventory of property prior to 1986 that is non-conforming with that lowest floor requirement.
And those properties are scattered all over the island, or are they in one general area?
They are scattered all over the island.
I'm just thinking, as development happened in the town, of course, the town was incorporated in '83, so there was some significant development that happened after that. And what you're trying to do now, excuse me, is to update these maps and the codes from the 1986 map, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This is a little bit out of my area, so I do appreciate the questions from my colleagues and the education. The only other question that I have is probably for a general staff question, as far as the schedule of LMO amendments for 2021. If there's a list of amendments for the LMO for 2021, we could have access to that and how they would be incorporated into our plan that we're working on that's been adopted by the town. I'm not sure if that's a question for you or someone else on the staff.
I don't know that answer.
Mr. Stevens, this is Anne Siren, I'll consult with Terry Lewis and see if we can get a list to you.
Okay, yeah, and just curious how those plans are fitting into, those amendments are fitting into our plan as we go forward, just trying to think comprehensively, of course, as always.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes, thanks. Just a couple of questions. The use of the mean sea level, now, that, was that number revised in the past year, that datum?
Yeah.
And you, how often does that get revised?
It was not revised in the past year, it was actually, so the datum is a survey reference marker that was updated, geez, I couldn't, Ms. McGowan, I couldn't give you a date, but it's been used, the 1988 datum has been used for quite some time by surveyors. It was, the problem that we had is that when you're dealing with the FEMA regulations, any surveys that come in that are within the floodplain have to be in the same datum as the map. So, we've been using an outdated datum for a very, very long time. To be completely honest, the datum can change. It is my understanding from some surveying colleagues that there is either a 2020 or a 2022 datum, I guess it's the 22 now because 20's passed, that is proposed. I don't know if it's going to be rolled out, but it will not affect these maps right now. I don't know what it holds for the future of surveys.
Because, because you're referencing-
But it does change.
Okay, I mean, it won't affect it if you're referencing that particular datum, I guess, right?
That is correct, and in the municipal code changes, we are referencing that NAVD-88 datum, and in the LMO change as well, it does reference NAVD-88.
Okay. And, you know, we talked about this in the LMO meeting, but I just wanted to confirm that the FEMA maps still stay as the guideline for insurance rates, and by us adopting more stringent requirements, we're not affecting those firm insurance rates? Is that true?
That is correct. This proposal, the way flood insurance is rated right now, it's based on how high your lowest floor is above the base flood elevation. So, this proposal could only improve flood insurance rates. It will not, not change flood insurance rates at all, with the exception of passively improving them for some low-lying areas.
Does the firm have to review our land use regulations, or they just don't care?
They do, not land use regulations, they review the municipal code ordinance, and then we have to meet minimum standards of the, our municipal code does have to meet the minimum National Flood Insurance Program standards, but not necessarily the land management side of it.
Uh-huh, but more stringent is okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, Sheri.
Mr. O'Neil?
Unmute yourself, Mark.
I'm sorry, sir, I cannot hear you.
Got it, okay. I got it, thank you. I'm wondering about current construction of residential properties, which there's quite a bit going on, are they building to the new code or to the old code? And if they're building to the old code, which, what date do they become non-compliant, when they finish, or when they start? Is that a clear enough question?
Yes, before FEMA, FEMA regulations go by the start of construction, and the way we have to track it in our system is when the building permit is applied for, once it goes into our system, and it works the same with building codes as well, once the permit is accepted by the town and gets entered in the system, that's the date that is stapled or stamped to that set of plans. So, anything that's under construction right now, of course, is meeting the current code, and anything after March 23rd would have to comply to the new code, but to try to keep things as consistent as possible, the new code's pretty much going to be the same as the current code is, as proposed.
No one gets caught in the middle there, that's fine. And the other question is more just an educational one, what flexibility do we really have here, given the need to keep the maximum building height the same?
Well, we don't have to keep the maximum building height the same to try to accommodate the changes to the flood insurance rate map, and not drop everything so drastically down to the ground, and trying to remove the perception that we're increasing maximum building height, because if people, if you remember the diagram, if people are losing that top 7 feet, you know, there might be variances or requests to actually review the land management ordinance to increase maximum building heights, and we don't want that perception. So, town staff, you know, LMO members, or staff members were involved, design review board members were also involved, our building official was involved too, as my supervisor, to look at all of this information and try to make this transition as seamless as possible.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Scanlon?
Thank you. Thought I understood all this when it came through the LMO committee, but I'm not so sure now. Thanks to the federal government and FEMA, never has anything so simple been made so complicated. And now, I understand that we are likely to get revisions to this whole thing from FEMA within the next year or two, is that correct?
Flood maps are supposed to be on a five-year cycle, that's not the case in South Carolina. I came from a jurisdiction in Georgia where I went through two map revisions on about a 12-year cycle. So, they have started the scoping process, what's called the scoping process, to identify the needs for the next map revision, there has been no momentum from the state, especially things that obviously have slowed because of COVID, but there has been absolutely no momentum on that. There is a potential that within five years from now, we will have new flood insurance rate maps, but there's very little moving forward at this time from FEMA's end.
If they can blow the whistle and this all gets changed again in a short period of time, I would, I would just say to my fellow commissioners that there is a time clock on this, and we need to get this to town council so we don't break the March deadline, and then we're in real trouble, but thank you.
Mr. Alfred?
Considering the severity of the Hurricanes Matthew and Irma, was there any consideration given to a more conservative approach, and perhaps having the BFE even higher, if that were possible?
Yes, there was, we did consider that very early on with the building community, and the building community was not in support of going any higher. We did start to look at historical flood insurance claims, and we have not gotten a list from FEMA since 2018, where they've changed the way they release those historical flood insurance claims. Now, there are very few homes that were inundated from Hurricanes Matthew and Irma that were constructed after 1986. Looking at the data that I had available, it looks like a lot of them could have been contents coverage from people like making claims, and they're not supposed to get paid, but making claims on stuff that was in their garage and not actually in the lowest floor of the homes. So, we did take this into consideration as far as sea level rise, as far as any, you know, future development, and this was the best proposal that we could come up with. And that's also the reason why we built in that base flood elevation plus 2 and plus 3 for the lowest floor requirement. So, in the event that base flood elevations are elevated race in the future, it'll be a little bit easier to take out that 13 clause, basically, and leave it at base flood plus 2 and base flood plus 3. So, there was some consideration, there just wasn't a lot of momentum as this was moving along to do anything higher than what we have now.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
I wish I had a question, but all my questions have been answered. So, no, I don't have any questions at this point.
Mr. Christian?
Sure, I've got a few, and I share the same concern as Stephen. So, the proposal is going to go from 15 to 14, you know, I mean, is that what I'm hearing being said?
Yes, that is. So, currently, we build at 15 feet, and the current 15 feet equals the new 14 feet. So, our proposal is to put building at 13 feet, which is the current 14 feet, and that 1-foot datum change is the most confusing thing ever. So, but we are proposing to go back- So, but, but we are proposing to go back to the elevation that was similar to prior to July 1st of 2016.
All right. So we're, in reality, for practical purposes, if someone wants to build, they would be able to build one foot lower than currently is in the LMO.
That is correct.
Okay. That was my first question. The other, my other broader question is your, your map that showed many of the properties now in a white area where they would not be subject to flood insurance. Is that, am I reading that map correctly?
Unfortunately, yes.
And the, and, you know, and the message there is, you know, we're on a barrier island and I am, I am very, very hopeful that as a town and as a community, many folks are going to be very tempted to not buy flood insurance because it's not required by their mortgage lender or by FEMA. And they are making a very, very foolish mistake. And that is a very, very large concern. And when you noted the very, very few homes that flooded during Hurricane Matthew, my community was, had some of those very few homes, which seemed like a lot of homes at the time, that were built to 15 and flooded. And not in their garage, but in, in their actual home and caused hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage. They had to relocate, you know, to have their, their, their homes repaired. And, and having a base of 14 is a scary thought. And knowing that these maps were developed pre-Mathew is even a scarier thought. I don't want to get into the politics of it. I've been here, like many of you, for 21 years and I have seen the sea level rise. And I, you know, I don't want to get into the politics of, of what's creating that. But there's no doubt in my mind that areas that did not flood back in the year 2000 do flood in the year 2000 and 20 and 21. And lowering that base, you know, and I know the home builders are looking at it from an economic standpoint, but, you know, I'm also looking at it from an economic standpoint. Matthew was a one, very low two. We get clobbered with anything bigger than that, those areas will flood. And there's no doubt in my mind. And I, I don't, I don't know if this is such a, a great idea of lowering it by a foot.
Yes, sir. So with Hurricane Matthew, the one thing to keep in mind is it was not used for the modeling these storms, but Hurricane Matthew was also on the order of what's considered a thousand-year storm event. We had over 18 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. So a storm like Hurricane Matthew was, is well out of the probability of what maps on these flood insurance rate maps. Hurricane Irma was a little bit different. It was, it was within that 100-year flood event. However, we had a humongous storm surge event, which we had homes not inundated during Matthew that were inundated during Irma. So we did, we did try to look at everything that we possibly could. We looked at those areas that did flood, including those areas in your community, and just tried to come up with the best proposal that we can. I do want to let you know that from the flood insurance standpoint, I've talked to a lot of our citizens and there are citizens that are thrilled that they can drop their flood insurance. And I do feel silly because I tell them, don't forget, you, you live on a barrier island. You should have flood insurance. These are just those probability maps. They're a minimum standard. So from this staff member, it is not getting promoted to drop flood insurance. And as part of that program for public information, as I mentioned, with the Real Estate Association, we do public outreach to promote flood insurance specifically. So I just kind of wanted to let you know from my standpoint that I, I promote the purchase of flood insurance and we did try to take anything into consideration. So any recommendations are, are encouraged.
And I know, you know, people are going to be very, very happy that their, their rates are, have been lowered. But anyone who drops their flood insurance who lives on Hilton Head Island, I will be so bold to say that, that is a foolish decision. And I, I was one of the individuals who made a calculated decision to keep my, my staff and my security officers and my maintenance staff on the island during Hurricane Irma. And I was out in the field when the storm drains reversed and water was coming and pouring out of the storm drains. It wasn't draining. And it was, it's a very frightening experience, to say the least. And, you know, people need to know that, you know, you get a storm surge and you get that much water, it's not draining. It's coming onto the, onto the land, it's not draining off the land. And again, I, I'm concerned that we're dropping that, that, that one foot. I know we're concerned about building height and that, that's the, the least of our worries during a hurricane or a major storm event. The, the other question I have, Sheri, does this in any way affect velocity zones, which are along the coast? And if folks live in a velocity zone, they are also subject to increased insurance rates?
Yes. So the way the velocity zones ended up working on the town is that we have very few pieces of property that remain in those velocity zones. So in those areas that are along Fort Royal Sound, that we have natural high ground, all of those areas that had worked, what I feel were erroneously mapped on the 1986 maps have all been removed from those velocity zones. There are a few velocity zones that remain on the Atlantic Ocean side, but it does not necessarily inundate an entire piece of property. The other caveat with those velocity zones is the typical base flood elevation for those zones ranged from 16 to 20 feet. And now they are 12 and 13 feet. So even though their insurance rate might increase, they are, they should still be elevated high enough unless it's one of those old bungalows that's on the ground that would be affected by that. But they, they'll see an adjustment in their flood insurance rate, but it is, it is something that's really kind of inevitable if you live on the Atlantic Ocean. It eventually be absorbed into that zone.
Again, a, a good reason not to drop your, your, your wind, wind and hail insurance as well as your flood insurance.
Exactly.
Okay. Again, I, I have to express my, my concern that we are dropping the base from 15 feet to 14 feet. I, I think that that's not a good direction to go in, given our experience with Matthew and given the fact that, you know, that in, in my estimation, from what I have seen with my own eyes, that mean sea level is, is, is rising. And, you know, until that situation changes because the sun or the climate or something else changes, I, I think we're going in the wrong direction there.
Chairman?
Michael?
I have a question. I, I don't mean to interrupt. Has any county member had, had a chance to question yet all week? But has everybody had a chance to comment?
Yes, they have, Michael. We, we-
All right. My question is, is do we, the, the town of Hilton Head, have the option of just leaving things the way they are, knowing full well that in a few years, the federal government's probably going to bring it back up again, as they've estimated, I guess, over the last hundred years, sea levels around here have gone up about a foot. And they estimate over the next hundred years, it may go up another foot. Knowing that that's probably in our future, do we have the option of just leaving things the way they are and complying with the FEMA rates?
If we leave things the way that they are, people will be building much lower than they are now. They will also lose that maximum building height. So right now, the land management ordinance measures the maximum building height from the base flood elevation. So if you're in an area that's 14 feet and the base flood elevation goes down to seven feet, right now you would have to build at 15. In the future, you'd have to build at eight feet. So we, if we don't change the language as it's written, we, we don't have to, but if we don't change the language as it's written, people will be able to put, or the homes will be much shorter as far as the LMO goes. They'll lose the building height, but it's, when it carries over into the municipal code, we have the minimum standard adopted right now, which is the base flood elevation plus one, which then rolls into they would only be coming a foot off the ground rather than seven feet off the ground to meet that lowest floor requirement. It is not in our best interest to leave things how they are now with these drastic changes.
Well, Sheri, you know, following-
In my opinion.
On Commissioner Scanlon's question, what language did we use to get to 14? Which is proposed?
In the, in the municipal code? Are you asking the language of the municipal code?
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm asking the language that we're proposing that the LMO changed to, to get us to 14. That's, that's, that's the language where you're proposing to get us to the 14-foot mark, correct?
Yes. So the, the LMO, the building heights will be measured from mean sea level. So it'll be coming up 14 feet from mean sea level. And that's static. We're just talking resident, I'm sorry, new, old, new, ah, old 14, new 13, coming up from mean sea level and taking base flood elevation out of the equation for building height. So that way, if maps change in the future, we won't have anything, we will have to look at how high we're going up above mean sea level and not using these maps that are for flood insurance rating as the staple for our regulation. Trying to take the fluidity out of these maps, out of the equation.
So basically, you're saying you're going to go to the 13 feet plus one?
Just 13 feet, not the plus one. So when it flips over into the municipal code side, the lowest floor requirement is going to be the base flood elevation plus three feet or 13 feet, whichever is higher. And looking at all of the data that we have, looking at topography, I would say 98% of the time, 99% of the time, 13 feet is going to be higher than base flood plus three, with the way these new maps are drawn. So with these maps being such a drastic change, like I said, we're trying to, the, the staff's thought process was taking the maps out of the equation as the regulatory standard and actually using the data that we have for our town and our characteristics that we've already established here as the basis for the regulations.
Go, go ahead, Todd. And unmute, unmute yourself.
Yeah. Sheri, I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, it feels like we're saying the same thing is that under the new measurement, NAVD-88, it's a foot lower? Or is it a, yeah, it's a foot lower in, in measurement from the 29. So are we saying the same thing, that it's 13 plus one, which is 14? But if you convert that to the NGVD 29, it would be saying 14 plus one is 15. Is that right?
We're, um, no, it's going to be 13 feet using NAVD-88, which is equivalent to the 14 feet of NGVD 29. So we're taking the plus one out of the equation.
But you're still requiring, the code says that it's going to be plus one after the 14, right? Or, or the 13 in this instance?
Not for the LMO building height or in the municipal code side, which will go to Public Planning Commission next week, a week from tomorrow, I believe.
No, no, I understand, I understand all that for building heights, but to answer Peter and Mr. Scanlon's question, the finished floor elevation is still going to be equivalent to 15, right?
No, sir. The, the finished floor elevation is going to be equivalent to the current 14 feet.
And you're, you're lowering it by a foot, Todd?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
So, so when you go to NAVD-88, you're going down a foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Well, Sheri, what would be bad, how, how could, how could we make it back to the original? Can you add, make it plus two?
Um, we, we can, if that's the recommendation that you would like to make. I, I can change the stuff that we've done already. I would just like to caution everybody that it has not gone to Public Planning Committee and we could end up back at this square. And we have to adopt something by March 23rd. So it's completely up to you guys how you would like for me to proceed.
I mean, I, I understand that, but I think this is, this is extremely important. And with, you know, the number of, of hurricane events, thank God they've been in the Gulf, but that doesn't mean that this season, they won't take a different track. I'm just, and we, you know, and we, we are now in a, a real estate boom again, where folks are building and in some cases tearing down homes and rebuilding them. I, I would, I would hate for us to make, make a mistake here.
Great.
Stephen, do you have your hand up? Mark, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering, you know, we, we pay a lot of attention to building height and I, in my perception, we, we pay that attention at the wrong end of the curve. And that if we were to be variable here, we ought to be that way at, at the height of the building to, to give us another foot or two. And I know that we have a timing problem and everything else, but we were brushed by a cat one with Matthew. And what we're really talking about is catastrophic three. It would, it would make a lot of this discussion irrelevant because it would be above both of those levels. But I think anything that we can do to move up the, the, the thing instead of move it down a foot is, is the better direction, unfortunately.
And, and Mark, I know, I have the utmost respect for the home builders, but they're, you know, looking at it from, you know, their lens and that once the, the home is built, then it's the property owner's, you know, problem. And I, I, I just think it's a mistake to leave it at, at 14.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. When this item came to the LMO committee, I mean, today, these, this is significantly different than what we, we reviewed. And my understanding was that we were trying to incorporate the new regulations, but keep building heights ample for safety purposes. And I, I'm, I agree with the direction that you're going with reinstating, whether it's added plus two, whatever it takes. And, and the other thing is, it was also to keep it aesthetically consistent with what's already been built on the island, too.
Again, you did receive a letter-
Chairman is prepared to make a motion to that effect. I would be happy to second it. Any, anyone else like to weigh in? I know we haven't gone through a, a second round, but we've been anecdotally commenting. Go ahead, Todd. And then Alan, you've got, you're next.
I, I would say to some degree that it has taken years and years for FEMA to get to this point. So I wouldn't count on FEMA necessarily moving quickly and updating a map. I mean, I'd be pleasantly surprised. And the other, Sheri, if, if the NAVD-88 measurement ever changes, the town wouldn't adopt that unless it became incorporated into the FEMA maps. Is that correct?
Yes. It would be a part of the FEMA map adoption when the new, new maps were ever rolled out with that new datum.
Yeah. And you look at-
But like I said, I don't know the status of it. That's a survey thing. That I, I don't know the status of any changes to it.
So just in terms of, you know, a change coming quickly, my guess is it'll probably take at least five years for that to happen.
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
Alan, go ahead.
Yeah. So I, I just want to make a couple of comments. Going back just a little bit, you know, we talk about the increase in, in that 2575 area, the wider area that, that is going to be out of the flood zone. So keep in mind that while we talk about that people may be canceling it- So keep in mind that while we talk about that people may be canceling it, their premiums are dropping significantly from where they currently are. So I think that the number that would actually cancel their policies would be fewer and far between. I will tell you that every realtor and lender around here tells all their clients to buy flood insurance. Even if you're, especially if you're not in a flood zone because you never know. The downside of not getting this through means extremely higher insurance rates to all residents on the island that are in a zone. So the timeframe is really of the utmost importance. And it increases the premiums, if I'm not mistaken, Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong. But it will increase those premiums if we don't have that in place.
If we don't have it in place, we will be suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program. And people will not be able to have flood insurance. They will not be able to renew policies. FAJA loans will go away. There'll be no federal disaster assistance. So there's a lot of repercussions if we don't adopt them by March 23rd of 2021. But please keep in mind that this is a land management ordinance change. And the map adoption is actually going to the Public Planning Committee. And I think several members are on this call next Thursday. So we will have something adopted, but we just want it to go in line with any changes on the, or any changes that could affect other parts of the ordinance or our regulations.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Do we, is there a need to go through another round? Or are we ready to make a motion on this particular recommendation? Mark?
Just for Sherry's sake, we would then need to help you with whatever new regulations come up. Still meet that timeframe. Correct?
Um, yeah, I'm, we, I think, and I think I'll need the help of Terry or Jennifer right here. I think we need a recommendation to move forward to Public Planning Committee next week. So this will go as a recommended public planning agenda item or two different PPC agenda items, one for the LMO change and one for the municipal code change. So the changes from the original LMO committee were just the reduction in that one foot. And it was put in the staff memo that was attached as to why we did that reduction. But I, we, what we need is to have a recommendation of what you would like for me to present to the Public Planning Committee specific to the building height recommendations.
Peter, I don't think we ought to put ourselves in the position where we have to explain, you know, have to explain that we missed a date that affects everybody's insurance rates. That would not be good.
Well, I wouldn't be suggesting that, Mark. We're going to just be making a recommendation to the Public Planning Committee that, you know, you act on the building heights, but you leave the base flood elevation at 15. I mean, that's where I am. I know that's not a motion, but
No, I'm okay with that.
I wouldn't stop the train. I would just make the additional recommendation that we are, you know, that at least from my perspective, and I've heard several others share the same concern, that that base flood elevation not be reduced by that foot, that it be remain at 15. Todd?
Which will be equivalent to the new 14.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It wouldn't be 15, it'd be 14 plus one.
I stand corrected or sit corrected, 14 plus one.
Okay.
But whatever gets us to the 15, that's where I am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Teresa?
Thank you.
Sorry, this is Terry Lewis.
I'm sorry, Terry.
That's okay. I just wanted to emphasize what Sherry said. So we do need it to move forward, but certainly the Planning Commission can make a recommendation for changes. And that those changes will be what we take to the Public Planning Committee next week.
Correct.
Yes, we just, we just need it to be able to move forward to that Public Planning Committee meeting.
Understood.
Thank you.
Would someone on the commission like to make a motion? Levon, you have a question or a motion?
I have a question. I need, I have a question for clarity. Again, I apologize for my voice. But I want to make sure that I understand. Some of my colleagues have already stated, we certainly do not want to miss the deadline. I think Sherry has made that pretty clear to us. I also understand that from the LMO committee or from staff, there've been significant input from the various organizations, the home builders and the realtors and people who are represented in that group. What's the problem from the Home Builders Association or the challenge? If you could clear that up for me, please.
So because we're pulling this regulation off of using those flood maps as the basis and pulling it to a townwide regulation, that plus one was put into effect July 1st, 2016, which leaves a 30-year inventory between 1986 and 2016 that do not have that plus one requirement. And in the municipal code, this goes back to the municipal code again and is disconnected from building height. In the municipal code, there's a caveat that's called the 50% rule. And anything, once the value of construction goes over 50% of the value of the home, the lowest floor elevation has to meet the current floor, the current code requirement. So we have a 30-year inventory of homes in our community that have a one-foot deficiency that have to deal with that 50% rule. And with that 50% rule, the town does not have, and we are not proposing what's called a cumulative clause. So it's one permit, one value, one 50%. Then they can finalize that permit and do another 50% permit. The problem is, is it's very cumbersome, it's very time consuming. And we have a large inventory of homes that will still fall within that 50%. So that's why the home builders came back to us and said, would you consider going down one foot? So that that way we can take into consideration that 30-year inventory meeting that 50% requirement for improvements in the future.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I'm trying to understand the difference in the one foot that we're discussing. And I understand what Chairman Christian is saying about the damage that we all suffered in the last couple of hurricanes. I guess where I'm not clear is that if we have a threat like that, is how much of a difference a foot is going to make? The question, the other question that I have, I get for Leslie. You said in the LMO meetings that this was, a lot of this was discussed and something different came forward.
The, in the memo that was set out today, she highlighted what was different under the summary. And this is one, the input from the Hilton Head area builders, which lowered it by the one foot, which was what Sherry was just relaying to you.
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to work with what we decide here. But I do think the date is of the utmost importance. I'm sorry, Peter?
Levon, you said you don't know how much that one foot would make a difference. I had homes where it flooded six inches into the home and it whipped up the drywall three or four feet and meant that you had to tear out everything from four feet down, everything from insulation to wiring to flooring and so on and so forth. So a couple of inches makes a difference. And a foot, if that house had been a foot higher, it would not have flooded.
I understand that. I guess I'm trying to weigh that against the process and.
And I don't think we're, any of us are trying to stop the process. We just want to make a recommendation along with that, that you leave that at 15 feet or 14 plus one.
So Sherry, does that present any significant problem for us as far as meeting that date is my concern?
I do not think so. Terry, can I please ask for your assistance here?
Of course, this is Terry Lewis again. So it won't, so again, the Planning Commission can make a different recommendation. We'll take that to Public Planning Committee, who will review that information. It'll go to town council. And then town council will decide whether they want to adopt it with the changes recommended by Planning Commission or to adopt what was originally proposed by staff or something in between. If there's something that's different, then we'll come back to Planning Commission. But we'll fit that in with either a meeting in between that's already scheduled or we would ask for a special meeting so that we can stay on track.
Okay, that answers my question. If we need a special meeting, then we could do that, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie?
Yeah, just a clarification of what exactly has to be done by the March date. Is it the adoption of the firm maps? Is that what needs to be done? Or is it the adoption of the firm maps as well as the ordinances? Because I was thinking that the ordinances was to keep us consistent here. And we wanted to do it because you didn't want anything falling through a crack in time. But in actuality, for the sake of our flood insurance program, it was the firm maps themselves that had to be adopted by mid-March.
Yes, and that is correct. The firm maps themselves have to be adopted. But if the only change we make to the municipal code side of things is just adopting the firm map, people will be building at seven and eight feet above mean sea level. So that is why this change has to go in conjunction with the map adoption. Because we, if we don't, if we don't want to change our regulations, then we're going to have a period of time where people can pull a building permit and only meet that base flood elevation plus one foot. And plus, in all those areas that are being removed from the special flood hazard area, which our land areas as low as seven, eight, nine feet could potentially build slab-on grate if we don't change the regulations in conjunction with the flood map adoption.
Michael? And then Alan.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move that we forward these attached amendments to town council with a Planning Commission recommendation that they seriously consider the 14 plus one as the way to go.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Okay, Steven, you got the second. And I had several hands go up. Now it's discussion. Todd and then Alan.
Yeah, I think it would be important, Sherry, with this recommendation is to provide the Planning Committee with what that may look like from a map perspective. Because basically, you're making that blue area or whatever color it is on the map represent an extra foot higher, is that correct?
There were the three gray maps. Were one showing the footprint of the regulated area, one showing the footprint of, or the current regulated area, one showing the footprint of the regulated area. If only the maps are used as the basis for regulation. And then the third map was based on the elevation of the regulated area for any lands lower than 13 feet above mean sea level.
Right, right.
I do ask, with this discussion, if you guys could please specify what datum you would like to make the recommendation, knowing that there is a change in one foot from NAVD 88 to NGVD 29.
Well, but I guess what I'm saying is, the old maps based on FEMA weren't really regulated or, they weren't based on real topography. And the current FEMA maps are now based on real topography. So I'm just saying, it would be good to know for making a decision, if you do go to 14 as a base flood elevation on the NAVD 88 datum, of what does that look like? You know, does that expand the area? And to Levon's question earlier, that may put more homes into a flood insurance or actually put more homes into nonconformity than what is current right now. If that makes sense.
The footprint was relatively the same between the 14 and the 13 feet. So I did both of them, but since the recommendation changed to 13 feet, I presented the map with the 13 feet. But when I did the topography based on 14 feet, it was relatively the same footprint as what we regulate today. The difference is that the 1986 maps were based on USGS topography, topographic maps that were built in the 70s. There was only a 10-foot contour interval. The current 2013 topography map that this is the base map for is based on one-foot contour interval. So they were previously based on topography, but just less accurate topography.
Right, right. And out of curiosity, why did the area in the entrance off of Hooping Crane that flooded in Matthew, why did that go away?
Um, why did that get removed from the flood insurance rate map?
Yeah.
Because of elevation, because of the modeling, the modeling that FEMA has.
Okay, so Peter, that.
So the same reason why we have a lot of beach property that was removed from the high-risk zone.
Okay, so Peter, I guess the reason why that changed was it was really more of a drainage outfall issue versus, I guess, tidal or anything?
It failed because the, basically the Jarvis Creek outfall failed.
Yeah, well, did something plug, plug the outfall?
Yeah, but plug the outfall, but in a serious storm, Todd, you know as well as I do, the power's going to be down. That system does not operate on gravity. It operates on a pump system. And the pumps go down, you're in the same boat as you were before with the clog system.
Well, I just think it would, if you have the exhibit already, Sherry, that it was based on 14, I think it would be good to, you know, to make that available when they, you know, look at our recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Alan?
Yeah, so, yeah, there was a little bit of information that was brought in about, you know, those homes that, you know, the 50% rule. And I think that needs to be really provided in more detail as to what it means with our proposal going forward to the Planning Committee and what it means to those homeowners that have those houses, if in fact they were to be, you know, destroyed and had to do that. You know, cost of building is going up tremendously at this point in time. And, you know, if we're talking about that 50% rule, then we're talking about demolishing the house and rebuilding. So I think that there's those older structures we need to take into consideration as we move this forward. And, you know, Peter, I'm, I know some people whose houses were flooded and they were also above, you know, the 13 or 14 feet. They were in a 20-foot zone. So keep in mind what we're talking about here. We're talking about dollars, people's lives, people's homes and insurance really is what we're talking about. And I don't want to make it so difficult for that, those homes from the 86 to now timeframe that wouldn't be able to be rebuilt, would have to be torn down and start over. So I just want you to think about that information as well.
Thank you for that, Alan. Any other questions before we call for the, for a vote? Okay, Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
I approve with a comment. I think the staff has done a lot of research on this. So I'm happy to approve this along with the revision that we made with this body. Approve.
Can you explain what we're voting on again, please?
Do you need to repeat? Motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, so my motion is that we forward the attached amendments to the Town Council, but we ask them to consider, you know, seriously, the 14 plus one concept as opposed to the other one.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. And I want to thank everyone. Obviously, you know, this is an important piece that needs to go to Town Council eventually, but a lot of thoughtful comments. And Terry, I'm going to ask you that when this goes to the Town Council or the Public Planning Committee, that I know the staff is going to have a recommendation that you allow either myself or the chairman of the, or the chairwoman of the LMO Committee to also address the Public Planning Committee on this item, so they can hear the, the arguments of the, of the Planning Commission as well as staff, if they tend to be different.
Yes, sir, we can take care of that.
I appreciate that very much. Leslie, depending on your, your timeframe, I will, you know, bow to, to you, whether you want to represent us, or if you want myself or another member of the LMO Committee to represent us at that, at that meeting. And you don't have to make that decision now, just, you know, get, obviously get, get back to me and let me know how you, how you'd like to proceed on that.
I mean, right off the top of my head, I think that Mr. Theodore has like incredible understanding of the ins and outs, and if he, if he's available, I think he would do a great job.
Perfect. And Todd, if you're-
He's not mic'd right now, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Todd, Leslie has tapped you, if you're available for that Public Planning meeting of the Town Council.
And I apologize, I was looking at something else. When is that?
It's next Thursday, February 25 at 3:00 PM.
All right, yeah, I'm available.
Thank you. I think, I think that you really have really good insight into this issue, and would well represent us.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
And Terry, when you do the Blue Jeans invite and include, Todd, if you can include myself as well, just to, just to listen in.
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that.
And anyone else on the commission who would like to be, like to be included? Okay? All right. Great discussion, very, very thoughtful, lot of issues involved, and we very much appreciate all the staff work. And Sheri, I know your voice was at the end there, and we worked you out quite a bit, and we really do appreciate all your hard work on this.
You're welcome. I ran out of water.
All right. Commission business, I have no further business at this time. Chairman's report, I do not have anything at this moment. Committee reports are probably are going to be the same. Todd, anything on CIP?
We're scheduled to meet on the 24th, that'll be our first meeting.
Great. Michael, I think com plan, I think we're, we should be good to go. Levon, have you met since the last time I sat in?
No, we do, I have not, I think that that last meeting, that is resting with the Public Planning Committee right now, the Historic Overlay District, and the next task force meeting is the first week of March, so I'll get an update from staff.
All right, thank you, Levon, for that. All right, LMO Committee, Leslie, I know you're hard at work, and I know Sheri scheduled another meeting with your group.
Yeah, we are scheduled for March 8, and we're like picking up almost a year later, I think, because of the pandemic. This was some concerns that had been brought us, brought to us by the Design Review Board, and staff needed to do some work on the matter, and it's dealing with setbacks, buffers, heights, building, massing, and so that, we're picking back up on that on March 8.
Thank you for that, Leslie, and thank you for committee's hard work. Alan, anything?
I've got nothing.
All right. All right, staff report, and when you provide us with your comments, understand that the entity that was going to work on Sam's Club and, and make it into a storage facility, I think we all voiced concerns on that, but moved it forward because it was something rather than nothing, but apparently they have withdrawn their proposal even before it's gone to council?
Yes, sir, I saw that in the newspaper today, so that, yes, that's my understanding.
Appreciate that. Anything else for us, Ann?
No, that's it. I would encourage you to work on your MASC training, if you haven't already done that. Another training opportunity, again, a reminder, is Friday, this Friday at 1:00 PM, there will be a Resilience in Vulnerable Communities webinar, featuring Sharise DeBose and Jamie Loco from our staff, and with the topic being Gullah Geechee culture on Hilton Head, so I'm sure that's of interest of everyone on Planning Commission. And if you have any questions about how to sign up for that, please let me know, we'll help you out. Thank you.
So, and how many hours is today?
That training, I believe, is an hour and a half, I believe, and you're all required to do for continuing education, three hours total each year.
And also, Ann, you said you will send out a link for us, or we have to let you know?
Teresa previously sent out a link for that, and I'll have her send out another link for that training to everyone in case you missed it.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in that.
And Levon, you need to give your voice a rest, you got too much, too much singing going on.
Hey, man, I got to work tonight, so I'm asking y'all to pray for me, and I'm grateful that it's only allergies that, I think, at this point, so instead of Michael Jackson, it could be a lot of Barry White tonight.
I'm sure you'll be terrific, Levon. All right, any other business to come before the commission? All right, hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion that we adjourned. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you, Levon. Alan, take care, and thank you, staff.